Any, uh, set it to those? Okay, I can make, I do have a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes.
I agree.
I'll say.
Okay, I'll tell everybody, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, for the mayor's report, um, top of mind is we, we had a, a week at the pump house this afternoon, which, uh, preparing to repair will not impact, uh, water service in the town. It does mean, in the next day or so, we will, um, be bypassing the sand filtration system temporarily to continue providing water to town that's perfectly allowable by, uh, the D H. Um, it does mean there'll be a little more iron magnesium in your water. I tend to choose that, think of that as spot services, uh, rather than an inconvenience, but, uh, they should have a prepared by the end of the week. We should be back, uh, back to normal operations. I think some of you may have noticed that there is a, uh, a, a speed indicator sign now on Main Street between Nobles and, uh, Town Line. Uh, I want to thank, uh, here, uh, Whitson and, uh, our county administrator for working with us on that, Mr. Curry, uh, to try to sort of keep, encourage folks to slow down as they're coming in that way. There's also a discussion about, uh, putting one on Warren Avenue, at least temporarily, to, uh, catch people as they come up the hill there, encouraging them to slow down before they, they get to the, uh, so. Uh, if there's any thoughts from council members about other places, or shifting those at some point, I think, you know, Fodderstaff runs into the same thing a little bit on my side of town, usually speeding up going out, coming in, um, but, uh, hopefully we'll, um, encourage folks to slow down, think a little bit about their speed up there as they're coming into, coming into town.
How, how long will the current one do not, is that permanent?
Um, it's not permanent, uh, we did not talk about an end. They, they got a, the county now has a half dozen of them, so it can be there for some time. Steve, I think we're, uh, just a quick update on, uh, on Paxton Shetland. Steve continues, uh, his work on that, and should report back to the A R B. Um, I received a letter back from the, uh, owner, just, uh, uh, saying, wanted to continue the conversation, and we'll see what is reported out by the A R B for, uh, for next action. I think that's all I had to report. Some people want to join us, but I don't think we're any highlights specific. I have a chair's report.
Nope.
Maybe this one. This one. Uh, Mr. Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of things to report on this evening. Uh, first of all, with regard to bounty line adjustment, uh, there's a meeting of the commission of local government coming out on March 1st. I have to be in court, unfortunately, that day, so I'm gonna have somebody else from my office, colleague Lynn, cover that hearing. I expect them to just be remote, he's in Richmond, if we need, needs to be there personally. Uh, second thing to report on is with regard to a number of general assembly bills that are pending that may be of interest to the town. Uh, there's one that would restrict your ability to, uh, zone for accessory dwelling units, and that has, uh, it's moving along, it's passed the senate with 2025 effective date, so it's not an immediate threat, but V M L is opposing that. And then, uh, there's a short-term rental bill that just passed the senate, uh, and, uh, it is basically providing for restrictions on your ability to, uh, to restrict short-term rentals, uh, through special use permits, uh, and would prevent you from adopting new ordinances with special use permit requirements for short-term rentals. So that's a bill that, that they're watching pretty closely, and, uh, V M L again is, is opposing that one, uh, due to its restriction on local government, government power. Tomorrow's crossover day, so we will know what the, what made the cut. What, what made the cut? What, what bills are gonna be, uh, moving forward, and, uh, you know, so, we'll see some of that, uh, but there's, there's a lot of bills that are, that are going through, uh, one affecting you, another one affecting you. It's a transient occupancy tax bill that would have required all transient occupancy tax payments go to Richmond, and then Richmond would send it back to you. Now, last year, this bill died, um, and it was, it was worse than that, that sounds. If that sounds bad, now it's actually worse than that, because they weren't gonna be real careful about where they sent the money to. It was gonna be based on zip codes. So if you had as, if your zip code, uh, was how they kept track of the, the short-term, the transient occupancy tax money, and they would send it to the county. So that's not this year's bill, but it's, it's not a lot better. It is, this year, uh, the transient occupancy tax bill, I don't think is gonna survive until, you know, that, because it, for, one of the things that, that's just very peculiar is that it doesn't give the Virginia Department of Taxation any additional resources to handle this additional paperwork. So they're not gonna be very well motivated to do anything about it if it's, you know, costing them much.
What's the argument for it?
The argument for it is from Airbnb in Alvergo, and they, they just wanna make it easier on themselves. But, you know, and, and one of the reasons it makes it easier for them is there's no way to audit any of the information that they're providing to us. So, we'll keep an eye on that. Any, I stand around, ready to answer any questions?
Thanks, sir. I have a couple of questions about the single S G R bill. That, when is vote expected? What's your idea about likelihood of passage? And if it does pass, when it would, when would it take effect?
Well, I'm sorry, are you talking about the, the accessory dwelling unit?
No, the, the one before that.
Oh, okay. Um, well, that was the first one I was talking about, was the accessory dwelling.
Oh, the, the second.
Second one, okay, that was the short-term rental.
That's short-term, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, it is, it is already passed the senate, and so, uh, we're watching it in the House.
And that would govern our ability to, to limit them using supplemental requirements for a certain use on them.
Right. Uh, there's a number of restrictions in it, uh, I, I can send you all the link if you, if you would like.
And if it does pass, when would it take effect?
It would, um, take effect July 1st unless the general assembly takes specific steps to have a different effective date. Oh, and, and that reminds me, thinking about effective dates, I, I don't know that this is an issue for you, but if it is, you let me know. There is a bill for the general assembly, probably won't be signed by the governor, but it, it would provide for, um, real retail sales of marijuana. And if it gets passed in some fashion, becomes law, there's a referendum requirement on it with a very short timeframe, because you would have, you would have to have the referendum this year, or forever hold your peace. So, either, but the most likely scenario is a good C.
Do we have an update on our friendly light lane?
Oh, it's dead. Yeah, no, I don't expect to, uh, hear anything more about it, um, and, uh, the attorney wrote me, uh, and maybe you weren't here when, when I talked about it, the attorney wrote me and said, uh, well, we're not, we think it should be a public road, therefore we shouldn't have to pay anything. So that, that's the type of filter. And we haven't heard anything from the post office owners, uh, I have a very optimistic folks who've tried to get hold of them as well. I just don't see any way, practice it for the, the road maintenance agreement to move forward at this time.
Well, I started the meeting, Steve, and the word was, yeah, we're already decided, just seeing.
Well, I think this is getting the post office folks to contribute, it's not Steve, Steve's not, I mean, those of us who are still party are party, but the, uh, the post office folks are refusing to be party, short of us spending a lot of money, uh.
So, uh, we have two agreements we were talking about, the landscape.
Oh.
Or that agreement.
But I think, yeah.
Road maintenance agreement.
Right.
So.
But I think Rush River has been standing by that, they were happy to get off of the road maintenance room sometime, and all of us been circling around whether or not we would get the post office owner to actually engage in the conversation, correct?
And I haven't heard anything more from, from Rush River with regard to, just a two-party road maintenance agreement at this point.
Well, when we started the meeting, Steve and I would, um, Steve Letzko and, um.
Richie.
Richard.
Yeah.
You know, I, I brought this up again, so, you know, they wanna just ignore it, they wanna stoneball or anything else, and Richie brought up a very interesting point, which is that postal office has got several deficiencies on that property.
Correct.
They don't have an occupancy permit on that property.
That's correct.
And some other things, and my thought was with, we knew the county attorney putting some leverage on them to say, look, you know, you guys are failing, and it's, whether it's the property owner or whoever, but, you know, say, look, we want this thing done, and then put it to the post office people down in North Carolina and say, you know, look, it's gotta be done, otherwise you can't use the money.
Well, if that's the direction from council, uh, then we'll go that way, but at this point, um, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to, to do that on, certainly on my own authority.
No, I understand, but I just, it, it's like, I guess what bothers me about it is this thing dragged on for a year and a year, year and year, it's like, okay, they just ran out the clock, to the point of saying, okay, we're not, we're not gonna do anything, and we never put any teeth into it, we never really, you know, said, look, we want this done, and so now it sounds like.
So I, I have not seen the postal office's lease with the property, so I have no idea whether they would have the ability to rectify the deficiencies and deduct that from their rent, or what their remedies might be, uh, and so that might, but, you know, trying to get information out of it is a little difficult.
If I might, uh, we have one, uh, last avenue is to, uh, talk to them, just notify the contractor, you know, the person who signed off on the, uh, building permits, uh, the owner, uh, they did, they did not pay the fee to the town for the asphalt.
Correct.
So that, that's the, sort of the last thing that I'd have to build to go on.
Is the county gonna do anything about that, though?
Uh, yeah, I haven't got the cooperation of the building official on that, so we can pursue that avenue. But it doesn't remedy the issues, uh, it gets us a, uh, a fee and a permit on the asphalt, and we can work the asphalt and see what's not been signed off on or not.
Right, the, the mistake was allowing them to open the dock, not to.
Which was the county's mistake.
Correct.
So is it being then that the road maintenance is gonna fall on Rush River solely?
I understand.
Well, it, it, that has yet to be decided. I mean, if the town doesn't maintain that road, you're gonna have problems too accessing a lot of the structure, but if you don't care if there's some potholes in it, then it might behoove the other neighbor there to make the improvements.
Martin, could you at least send a letter down to postal service and, uh, regional folks in North Carolina, point out that there is a problem, do you want to see the situation, and see if postal service inspector general might be involved?
All right.
Assuming that's the consensus, okay?
I'll do that.
Another way out of the moment.
Yeah.
I mean, at least we're raising the issue.
Right, at least raising the issue, because you didn't say we will maintain it, we don't have a public works program.
You tried to tell me.
So we're just burdened with, you know, hiring contractors to fix things, and that becomes a question, well, how much is the town, and how much is the Rush River, back and forth.
We'll certainly enter into some sort of arrangement with Rush River, so that we're not carrying a total, total amount. It's maybe a two-thirds, one-third arrangement rather than a one-third, one-third, one-third at this point.
Well, as, I mean, we're sitting in the meeting, what Steve Letzko pointed out is, you know, when the, when the road is wide and it's all said and done, it's essentially gonna be a new road up to that second entrance point.
Right.
So it's probably not gonna be made for a while, but it's still, you know, there's still that issue that, you know.
And it's the principal thing, nothing else.
It is, it is, and, and like I said, it's just, it's.
But we should certainly plan to enter into an agreement at a, at a minimum, that is a sort of two-thirds, one-third agreement, that we'll be, to begin accumulating funds to, for eventual future maintenance.
If you base it, if you base it on.
If we take ourselves as partial.
If you, if you base it on expected traffic, it's gonna be more than two-thirds.
Well, I'm just throwing that out as, as equal parties, but yes, whatever is the final equal part assertion, but we should conclude that, so at least again, the.
Well, I'll, I'll raise that issue again, then with Mr. Furth, and see if we can.
Yeah, I think the combined pressure of the postal office, if we can get a resolution.
Mr. Curry, let's go.
Uh, it's like, uh, I can carry most of the, the things on.
Happy to help.
Thank you, thank you. Just to update the, uh, report that we have in front of you, we have, uh, it's pretty self-explanatory, a couple of things you've already talked about, and the, uh, sign package for Rush River, uh, is now finalized, so that'll start in the special use permit process, so that'll start, uh, making its way to the town council and planning commission, uh, during the next, uh, month, once we begin advertising for it. In addition to the postal office and Paxton Shetland, one other item is the, the steps on the Main Street, uh, at the Little Law Cabin, uh, and I have a meeting with, uh, B Dot on Thursday morning to, uh, talk about a number of things, but that's something I'm just, uh, going over with B Dot. And lastly, two things, uh, pretty much with both the planning commission and A R B, not sure if we're gonna actually have the A R B meeting, uh, next week, the applicant who has the, um, garage.
Post office.
On the street, on Gay Street, is traveling, uh, this month, so she has the table, uh, for a month, month. Uh, and then the planning commission, most of our work at the end of the month will be on the zoning map and some outline with the zoning ordinance to try to, uh, a little better organized, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
About the other business, you know?
Yeah. Big report.
Man?
Me?
Yes, any questions for Steve, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll talk about more stuff later.
No, I'm good with this.
It, it will be a bit redundant, but just, um, Steve's report really covers everything that the planning commission went over at our last meeting, um, here, Ms. Carolyn Stroud. Um, we forwarded a memo that I think you all have, with four draft motions to consider for the short-term lodging and the B and B issues, and there was, uh, you were there, obviously, Drew was there and made some input as far as timing, how, and all the things that to keep in mind and consideration of wanting to maintain, uh, residency in the town, given the population aging and so forth, and yet balance that with the rental market business aspect.
Thank you, make sure we're working, doing that together, inform our process of creative work for us next month.
There will be a planning commission meeting.
All right, uh, and then, what's anything for the A R B?
I don't have a report.
Okay.
Not that there were gonna.
I wasn't putting you on the spot, just, I mean, there wasn't a, I think, it was just, the action was on the table.
Right.
Right.
I.
The last one.
Yeah, so I don't think there'll be an A R B meeting, uh, something, you're kind of changes.
All right, turning to old business, uh, steps at 322 Main Street, which Steve just raised, I know he's gonna have, uh, B Dot take a look at it, and I think, see what their, their opinion is on stairs, but.
Yeah, I just hope so we can get some resolution. When you talk to B Dot, the other thing I'm wondering, um, we always struggle with, you know, parking in town, and right around Main Street, we've got a bit of a ditch, there's some culvert. I'm just curious, as long as you're sitting with them, what their thoughts are, and whether or not that ditch could actually be filled in to create, I think we could get three or four, maybe even five parking spaces from, um, that will post up where the papers offices are, and coming up towards the end, and I don't know what they, what their thoughts are, whether they have any money to do that, or, you know, what they see.
I'm sure they'll tell us that they have no money, but.
True.
I'll bring it up with a, I mean, a wooden roof, uh, that side of the street magically, if I have, uh.
Yeah, excuse me.
Did you have a warning?
Well, because when you look at the other side, as they, years upon years, they just keep paying, you know, a raising level of pay, the asphalt, so you really can't mark the other side, so that's the only place that we, you know, open that up, so, yeah, I'd be just curious what their thoughts are, whether it has to go into their planning, or what do we take?
I don't talk to them about that.
And the culverts on that side are completely plugged, I mean, it's just, though, the ditches allow drainage, because the, the culverts are not functional.
No, because they don't clean it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it might as well, can pull it out and put in a new culvert, that at least will be cleaning the flow down to that intersection where that.
Drain entrance.
And there's a, kind of, yeah, so, yeah.
I'll look forward to hearing, I'll do it out fast to say about that, on that situation, and then, you know, taking it up with the, uh, new owner, uh, shortly thereafter. All right, uh, on new business, we do have the report recommendations from the planning commission, uh, what I would like to rec, I'll summarize it briefly, but where I'm gonna go with that is to suggest that we have a joint meeting of the town council and planning commission, uh, next month to discuss, uh, their recommendations and which way the council may wanna go. I think the, the two principal things to consider are both limitations on, uh, future short-term rentals in town, not, that would not touch on the current short-term rentals, but anyone in the future who purchased a home and wanted to use it for short-term rental, putting in some sort of more important place on that sort of action, and then also addressing what is, uh, incongruity in our current ordinance on bed and breakfast, which is to say that we have a de facto situation, we have a ten-bedroom, um, bed and breakfast, but it's not addressed in the ordinance, so, uh, the suggestion being that we split the ordinance and create a class one bed and breakfast and a class two bed and breakfast, one of which is a traditional, uh, bed and breakfast managed by the, uh, onsite resident owners of the five bedrooms, and then another class that goes above that, that is professionally managed by a hired staff, uh, that covers from the, you know, six bedrooms up into eleven of the common hall sets, which is for eighteen folk, folks to be there, so around my homes. Um, and those are the two things for us to discuss at, at that joint meeting, I mean, discuss it more now, and, uh, like, uh, you know, pursue the, or consensus to move forward at that joint meeting next month.
Well, one of the things I'm wondering is how this pending legislation in Richmond is gonna impact this.
Right, I don't know.
And do we, do we move forward, do we give a law? Because it sounds like.
It, it may limit your options.
Yeah, and, and is it, limit our options if we don't do anything by a certain date? Do we do it now and then grant further dinner, or is it gonna be, where they're gonna go back on municipalities and say, no, you've gotta change now?
Well, yeah, that, that's the tough part, one of the versions that is billed provided for.
Back to December.
Yeah, if, if you didn't adopt it, for, and last year, you couldn't do anything, and for some reason, it's not coming up at the moment, uh, but, uh, the, so, wow.
We should by next month know one way or another, though, so.
Correct.
So I think if we, we could schedule it on the agenda, if we've already got a problem where Richmond's tied our hands, then so be it.
Yeah, yeah, let me try to.
But if they have not, then, uh.
Right.
There's certainly a consensus that we wanna address that, uh, matter in town from town residents, certainly from the planning commission, I know I've heard from several town residents who would like us to take up that as a, um, a consideration.
Right.
I have a quick question about law. Am I right that it's okay for us to be more restrictive than the Virginia code, and problems come in for less restrictive, or is it that we have to be the same?
You, the, the rule is that you cannot forbid what the state expressly authorizes or requires. Um, you can legislate in the same field, and you can be more restrictive, yes, but if there is something, you know, that the state says you have to do, then you can't prohibit that.
Correct.
So I guess, when the state says eighteen, we say five?
That's fine.
Is it, okay.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Fine.
Any other questions? Um, so I'd like to know that we plan to have a joint meeting with the planning commission at our March meeting, uh, to address their, uh, the matters they refer factors from their last, uh, meeting, these would include the, uh, limitations on future short-term rental property in town, and, uh, the, uh, division of our, uh, our B and B ordinance to address our de facto situation there. Right, I, I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
I'll start you.
Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion adopted.
What would you do to that?
March order?
March order.
Yeah. Um, all right, on to something, uh, a wonderful light topic, a wonderful community topic, uh, as, I think some of you noticed, there's gonna crop up a flag in town that resemble one hanging right over here, um, you know, while our, and this is George Washington's flag that he carried as commander in chief, um, I think was it, uh, I have to think, uh, thank Ken Abram, who was the first person who flew it, who had, they'd seen it at Mount Vernon, thought it was beautiful, they flew their house, Caroline asked him about it as their neighbor across the street, uh, and she bought one for herself, uh, and then sent around an email to folks saying, hey, isn't this wonderful, we should, we should all consider flying this, is representing, you know, sort of our tie to George Washington as our, our namesake. Um, a very popular response to that, and, uh, it seemed to me, after referring with our lawyer, that we could do it, uh, that why not go ahead and officially adopt, uh, this flag as the flag of the town of Washington? You know, while our, uh, our physical connection to Washington may be lost to the midst of time, certainly, uh, unlike, uh, we can claim to be the, uh, the first Washington asset in District of Columbia, and, uh, I mean, we've always had a strong. What's that?
Claim.
I wasn't playing the other thing.
I think this, historically, it's a bit complicated.
Well, it is certainly complicated, the, the date of us, that we've been called Washington's a little less complicated.
But there, there are other Washingtons in the United States who predate the date when we call them.
Try not making any claims, though.
We're putting that at stake.
As I said, while the facts of matter might be lost to the midst of time, I hate it, it's a wonderful symbol of our connection and honoring our, our namesake, President Washington, um, and, uh, so I would like to introduce a resolution, uh, that we adopt the flag as the flag of the town of Washington, and that we specifically encourage, uh, our residents to fly that flag on President's Day weekend, and of course at other dates during the year. Any thoughts or discussions? I'll take your silence as a consent. Um, so I, I'm gonna sort of walk through a quick resolution, um, in recognition of our town's close association with President Washington, and the wish of our community to adopt not only a symbol of the town, but a symbol of that, uh, close association, let it therefore be, um.
Resolved.
Resolved, thank you, can't read my writing, which is what my, brought my, uh, ring lessons, I mean, that, that on this date, the town of Washington is officially adopting the George Washington Commander in Chief flag as the flag of the town of Washington in Virginia, and further, that residents of the town are encouraged to fly the flag, especially on President's Day weekend, uh, and any other dates, uh, if they deem appropriate. Have a second?
One second.
I'll take a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, resolution is adopted, and we now have a. Resolution is adopted and we now have a town flag. I would also like, the town has procured a number of flags which are available to residents to purchase from Barbara. We encourage you to fly them this weekend, especially since we're going to have a reception here at Town Hall honoring President Washington on Saturday. That'll start at five o'clock, five to seven o'clock here. I would also like to thank Drew Mitchell, who has, who has agreed to donate flags to those who make a substantial donation to the renovation of Town Hall, which we will also be doing here on Saturdays. Encourage you folks will have out the plan for the renovation for the summer and encourage you folks to make donations to that fund. So thank you Drew for your, for contributing that. Any other questions? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
For the forelock?
Oh, for the forelock.
I'm looking forward to having the flag fly up at Yon Hall this weekend. Tyler and I are going to be on a family trip, but, so we won't make Saturdays a event, but I will be here in spirit and, and material.
Thank you. I appreciate my apologies. Any other? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.